We'll start off as we normally do with our prayer request list. We need to remember Amy Maney. We need to remember the families of the former students of Smith County High School that passed away. The Rachel Dunn family, they've lost their home to a fire. Becky Howell and the Abbott's family, we need to remember them as they've also lost their house to a fire and lost Phillip. And also, we just need to remember the county and the school system, this community. Right now, we've had a tough few weeks with a lot of tragedies happening. We just need to remember all those people that's been affected by those tragedies. If you don't care now, we'll go to the Lord in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we're so thankful that we've been given another day of life. Father, we're thankful for every blessing of life that you give us. Thankful for the health we have and the opportunities we have every day. We know this community's been affected by many tragedies lately and we want to be grateful for those, for those that have lost material things, but most of all, for those that have lost loved ones. It's hard to replace those and many will struggle through the upcoming months and we just pray that you'll give them the comfort that only you can give them. We also want to remember the sick of the community and the sick that were mentioned earlier and any that may be having surgeries, we pray that you'll be with them. Father, we just want to pray now that you'll be with us as we're tested and tried every day. We know that we need to look to you, we need to pray about the things, Father, and we need to open our Bibles. And Father, we just need to look to you in times of trial and we need to remember to be Christians and not act out angrily and hastily and just, we need to be patient and we need to do things in love. We want to pray this night for those who don't know you. We know there are many of you that don't know you and we know the most important thing in life is that relationship and we pray that there'll be a way somehow in their life that they'll come to you. We just want to pray now that you will continue to be with us each day, be with us through this meeting, be with our children in this system, and just pray that everything we do is to the best of them and to the best for them. Father, just forgive us, strengthen us, and help us through each day because we know there's going to come a time when every knee will bow and every name will confess. And Father, most of all, we want to thank you for your sons. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, we'll start with our school updates. Deafited Elementary.
I'm Miranda Cook, I'm the principal at Deafited. I first want to take this opportunity to thank the board members and Mr. Smith. We have got off to a great start. It's been a good school year so far in Deafited and we're excited about that. Our enrollment currently is 266. That's about average. We've been down a little, we've been up a little, so that's about normal for us. This year, we have hired, most of our staff has just rolled over from last year with the exception of two, Ms. Cam Phillips and Ms. Savannah Nixon. We actually just hired Ms. Savannah for first grade a couple of weeks ago for a growth position. As always, I'm very proud of the students and the teachers this year. Our test scores was really good this past year again and we were right on the bubble, just right on the fence. It's been a reward school and that's been the same way for the last few years, so it's been consecutive, so we're hoping just a little bit more growth and we will make that with this coming year. As you all know, it's got cold weather in November, so it's basketball season. We're in full swing, I think, since fall break. I can't count the number of basketball games I've been to, it's been a lot. We've been in the DeKalb West Tournament, we've been in the Forks River Tournament. We've had a really good season so far. The boys won the Forks River Tournament and placed at DeKalb West. The JV teams placed at both tournaments, first and second, so it's been a good year for basketball. K4 was a big success and Junior Pro is about to come up. That's our big fundraiser. That's really the only fundraiser we do for the school. We'll start sending home registration forms this, in the month of December. We'll start practicing the end of January. So if you drive by Deafited from the end of January until the end of March, four nights a week and all day Saturday, there's vehicles. So, we're excited for that to start up pretty soon. An exciting event we've had for this fall, we did a literacy day. At one point, we tried a literacy night but didn't have a lot of participation, so we've done a literacy day. This is the second year in a row we do that so all kids can participate. We have a theme, we all dressed up, we had speakers come in and all teacher, no matter their content area, focused on reading for that day. We made smores with the kids, so that's always an exciting day that the kids enjoy and that was a big success. And then for a parent involvement night, we will have STEM night in the spring. That's where we do a lot of hands-on experiments and so invite parents to participate with that, so that will be in the spring. You all will be invited to that. For the schools with grant money and safety, Mr. Smith is purchasing cameras for all of the schools, both indoor and outdoor, so that's going to be an improvement to the facility for safety. Today was Career Day for 7th through 12th grade. Our 7th and 8th graders went and I always love it, it's a wonderful experience. If you haven't been, I encourage you all to stop by. There's all kinds of vendors from businesses, local businesses, a lot of post-secondary and it gives opportunities for kids to ask questions. I know as they go into high school, they're expected to pick a focus. So it gives kind of opportunities for 7th and 8th graders to get an idea of careers or jobs so they kind of know what they might be interested in when they get ready to enter high school. This coming weekend, next weekend, our Beta Club will be traveling to Auckland Hotel for Beta Convention. This past summer, we had two students compete in the Nationals. One of those placed, so that was in Oklahoma City, so we're hoping, good luck to them next week and maybe one of those will place again so we can go on this summer to Nationals again. Our Beta Club will also take a trip in the spring. Our Beta Club consists of 6ths, 7ths, and 8th grade and each spring for their field trip, we go to a different university. So like by the time the kids graduate 8th grade, they will have been on three college tours. So we try to do that and rotate them so they get to go to three different ones. I would like to take just a moment and give a shout out to our community. I really appreciate the support. It doesn't matter if it's working a concession, if it's academic support, parking cars for graduation, Field Day, or even lending a hand to a neighbor in need. Our community, both Pleasant Shade and Deafited, both communities have really worked together and they're very supportive, whether they have a kid in the school or not, they're very supportive at the school and we really appreciate that. And in closing, Mr. Smith already mentioned, but we have had two of our school families, I feel like we're a family there and we've had two employees that both have had devastating experiences for their families, so we do ask that you all remember them. The last couple of weeks at school, it's kind of been a roller coaster. We feel like we kind of get back on our feet and then something else has happened, but things are gradually getting back to normal, but I ask you to continue to remember those families. I could go along with a lot of other things, but I'm sure interventions and RTI and that kind of stuff between your school updates, you've heard it and it's all the same, but unless you have any questions, that's kind of what's going on at Deafited.
Mr. Lewis?
I know you're surprised, aren't you?
I'm surprised. Go ahead, Mr.
I just want to tell you, thank you for always doing such a remarkable job. Really do appreciate you and your staff and y'all did an amazing job.
Well, thank you, we appreciate it. I do love it there. Thank you.
You ready to play phone?
It is, I think so.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Now we'll move on to Gordonville Elementary. Ms. Rachel Kettler. And I'm glad you're feeling better, I know you weren't here the last time.
I'm very glad to be here. I feel like I've stood you guys up a few times and I apologize for that. I made a little joke at the principals' meeting last time and said, "I really hope that I can come this time and I'm glad to be here." For those of you who don't know me, I'm Rachel Kelly, I'm the principal at Gordonsville Elementary. This is my second year being there and I'm enjoying every minute of it. We have currently 311 students. That is kind of fluctuating, as Miranda said, we've had six new students come in recently and then we've had a few go out, so that continues to happen throughout the year. Currently, we have three teachers on each grade level except for six and there's four there. A few changes, Ms. Vivian Kuduski retired, so Ms. Tisdale, who is a longtime catering teacher, has moved down by her choice down to third grade and she's doing a wonderful job. Ms. Tisdale has taught third grade, kindergarten, 5th grade, she can teach anything, so she's doing a remarkable job there. Dr. Amy Lee Rogers is our new librarian. Ms. Hamlet went to the high school, at Gordonsville High School, and she comes to us, she's a local, but she was at Tennessee Tech University and she's come back home, so we're really happy to have her there and she's been a great asset, not only is she a librarian, but she also has a degree as a reading specialist. So that's really going to help us with ideas to help build literacy within our building, so she's done a great job. And this summer, as you all know, when we had the computer problems, we lost our computer system in the library. And so, coming in, I thought, "This is really going to test her." She handled that with, I mean, she put 4,700 books in, she had some helpers, but she was positive, so I thought, "We've got the right girl for this job." So she's doing a remarkable job. Nicole Schumacher is our new Spade paraprofessional. She is going to be starting with us very soon. She's transferring from the middle school, so we look forward to having her. And Officer Nick Campbell is our SRO. We shared him with New Middleton and he's also doing a great job. So as Miranda said, our school year's starting off great. I want to give my students, parents, and teachers a shout out. We've worked a reward school for the 2018 school year. I can just say, my students, and some of them are here, work very hard. They really work hard to achieve those goals and their parents are very supportive. We also have a very supportive community and I'm very thankful for that. My teachers go above and beyond, not because I ask them or you all put demands on them. If you drive by Gordonsville Elementary, you're going to see some cars in that parking lot because they want to give back to the community and do what's best for these kids and I can't commend them enough for everything that they do. We are trying a few new things. Ms. Rhonda Lancaster is our guidance counselor. She is starting an ARC club at Gordonsville Elementary and our 5th and 6th grade students are trying to facilitate that. And with that being said, they're getting together and they are coming up with ideas to implement throughout our school for the younger kids to promote kindness because that's something that I really think's important when we're educating our children. It's not just the academics, it's also making sure that their daily needs are met and what do they need, what can we do for them? And they have just really, really done a great job with that. They have started a service project where they've taken up things for the Humane Society. As a school, we've done that and really good participation there. They're just coming up with lots of new ideas and I look forward to seeing what they are doing. We've had our veterans program. We are going, last year, Mr. Grissom started a handtime group, so we're kind of coming off of that, trying to get more kids involved in a handtime group because not every child is going to be on the honor club and not every child's an athlete, so we're trying to come up with more ways for lots of kids to be involved. And he's doing a great job with that. Last year, we visited the pavilion and the nursing home and played for them. We're planning on maybe doing some school events, so we look forward to doing that. Academically, like I said, we're great. Our athletics, I was very, very impressed with the 3rd and 4th grade teams. I think I saw Mr. Lewis at the dollar store one day and told him I'd just come from a game over at Deafited and I told him, I said, "I'm so proud of all the counties, you know, just what good sportsmanship that they are exhibiting and with each other." And so, that was a testament to what everybody's doing in Smith County. So our 5th and 6th grade teams, they're looking good and practicing and just doing their best. So I want to thank you all so much for the opportunity and thank you for your support.
Any questions? Mr. Lewis?
Thank you for what you do and you're, I really liked the way you're thinking outside the box and involving these other programs outside of academics and children that don't necessarily care about athletics or whatever. They're as important as other ones and I appreciate you thinking outside the box.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Ms. Kettrel, Union Heights Elementary.
Well, I'm with Emily Kettrel and I'm the principal of Union Heights and I said in some ways, going last is the easy part because like I say, ditto, 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 but then in other ways, it's the hardest part because I've got to come up with something good to impress you guys with. Ms. Rachel back there informed Miranda and I that she was the meat of the sandwich, that she went the middle and I said, "What does that make me, the soggy bottom bun?" No, anyway, from the soggy bottom bun, I'm going to try my best here, okay? But first of all, thank you for allowing us to come and talk to you guys. I know I get to see Mr. Joe all the time, but I don't always get to see each of you, so it's kind of fun to come and get to see what else going on and let you hear the great things at Union Heights, so thank you for the invitation. And speaking of Mr. Joe, he's outstanding, always willing to help. He's a phone call away. I asked him a couple of weeks ago for a Bella Hay and he brought me three, so I mean, he goes above and beyond and in case you didn't know, today's his birthday too, so. I won't tell you how old he is, but he's older than I am. We'll do that.
Cake and ice cream.
Yeah, he's a little disappointing to have a cake and ice cream. We may work on that tomorrow.
We'll give him his birthday whipping afterwards.
Okay, I may have to stick around for that one. But as far as the school year, we got off to a great start. It's very helpful when you can end the year and begin the year with the exact same faculty and staff and we were able to do that, so everybody was literally hit the ground running. I feel like we have not stopped yet. Sometimes I'll slow down, but that's a good thing. We got to hire some additional support staff this year and having one more paraprofessional in the building has made a world of difference because then you can focus on those younger grades and those foundational years and, you know, anytime you get an extra set of hands there, that's just a win for all of us. We are continually making improvements to our campus. I know one of the things I think I've been most excited about was the removal of the portable. That was a team effort getting that one done and now we're just waiting for the weather to get where it needs to be so we can finish the fencing and then the next big project is to expand the playground area and kind of improve on that one. I think Miranda already mentioned about the security grant with the new cameras, excited about that. Anything that we can do for the safety of our school should be a top priority, so we're very excited about adding cameras both inside and outside of the building. And I have a funny story. An added layer of safety this year is we bought bright orange visitor stickers and those children take that serious. So if you come in the building and you don't have one of visitor sticker, they're going to let you know. Mr. Smith came in one day and he and I had made it all the way out to the playground and I get a radio from a teacher and said, "Ms. Kettrel, my students want to know if that man has on a sticker." They didn't see a sticker on him. And I said, "Well, you can tell them that he didn't tell them that he doesn't have a sticker, but he's with me, so he's safe, it's okay." So they will call you out on that, so make sure you get a sticker if you come in. Technology wise, we are one-to-one for grades 2 through 8 on Chromebooks, so we always consider that a big win because technology is so important and a big push there with all of the online textbooks and the web-based programs that we use. One of the things we're really excited about is the Beta Club. We've had a Beta Club, but it's kind of, the sponsor kind of had lost interest for a while, so we've got some new sponsors and we've really got that back up and running this year with a lot of big ideas. And for our service project, we decided we'd focus on our school and partner with the pavilion. So that's one of the things we're going to do with our Beta Club. And the pavilion, they're very good to us, we have a good partnership with them and part of that is because of location. All right, I'm going to pick on your school for a little bit. Forks River and Union Heights, we were, we won the Go Noodle Challenge last year and we got water bottle filling stations. We said that a bunch of times. And so now that children can go and fill up their water bottles and carry with them all day. So the health department decided that they wanted to do another challenge and this is just between Union Heights and Forks River and they went out and had a bunch of water bottles donated by community businesses and every child in both schools got their own personal water bottle. And so now we are in a competition on who can drink the most water between now and December the 3rd, so you can fill in the rest of that, how the rest of that is going, okay? Water bottles everywhere and there's lots of people in the hallway. Career Day, I think Miranda talked about that, they're seven and eighth grade and they came back so super excited about Career Day, so I hope that's something that we continue to do because it's very important, very impressionable for children at that age and, as you said, getting an idea of what they want to do when they go to high school and kind of what path they want to focus on. And the upcoming events that we have, and you guys are always invited to any of these, but we have the music program on December the 20th and then in this, and we don't have this one set in stone yet, but we created a cookbook this year and hopefully between now and the next couple of weeks, we're going to have a night where you can come in and go from room to room and sample all the rest, or sample some of the recipes from the cookbook and I think that's going to be a lot of fun. But we also have in the works for next semester, we have our history night, a STEM night, what else, oh, literacy night, that's always a big one for us as well. And I'm kind of saying the big news for last, I just told Mr. Joe about this one today because we just found out about it yesterday, it all is done, but on December the 3rd, Governor Lee is going to visit Union Heights. He's going to come and he's going to tour the building and he is going to actually give a little lesson to 3rd and 4th graders about the different branches of government, so we're real excited about that and we hope that Mr. Joe and Mr. Smith and anyone else that would like to come during that time, I think he's going to be about 1:30 on that day if you would like to come out and be a part of that as well. And you are welcome to see anytime, just get your visitor sticker.
Any questions? Mr. Lewis?
Sure. And excuse my ignorance, but how many years have you been president of the state?
This is my sixth year.
Well, the reason I ask the question, of course, I have family on that side of the county as well and I just want you to know, I never hear anything except good about you and that school and it's all the time. And you know, that's pretty remarkable sitting in that position, you know, somebody always wants to complain and it's always good and I appreciate that a lot. I know you shop a lot and it's hard to earn that every day, but that's all I ever hear.
Well, thank you. I do love it. I came from a high school background and I thought that was going to be my calling for the rest of my life, but it didn't turn out that way and now I can't imagine myself anywhere else.
Good. You've done a good job.
Thank you. You just want a cupcake, I know.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Kettrel. Now we'll move on to our presentation from Ms. Stephanie Johnson about our 21st century Extended Learning.
I'm Stephanie Johnson and I'm the program director for the extended learning. And some of the things that we do, can we get our clothes up, okay? We do snack every day, we do a healthy snack, we do homework, enrichment activities like fitness. We focus on academics, especially math and language arts. We do a lot of STEAM and STEM. But one of the main things that we try to do is to enrich the learning opportunities for the students by complementing rather than duplicating the school data. We have opportunities to build and strengthen the partnership of the schools, the parents and the community. We like to provide a safe place and a supportive place where our students come and their families are welcome to come. We also explore the students' interests and develop their talents. We serve grades 1 through 12 and last year, 75% of the students that we enrolled attended 30 or more days and averaged more than an hour a day. And that's an important mark because that's part of our measurable goal. We have four goals that the state sets for us and with those goals, you have to attend that 30-day, one-hour-a-day average mark in order to be counted. The first goal is all students will reach a high academic standard at a minimum, attain proficiency or better in reading, language arts, and math. So language arts and math, as I said, that's what we're focusing on. There's also, with those goals, the way that we measure those goals, we have targets. And the target is that 50% of the students will improve their grades in language arts and math between semester one and semester two, it's the semester average. And 40% will be proficient or above in reading, language arts, and math on standardized testing. I don't have the standardized test scores and all those statistics yet, but I can tell you that some of the students that attended 50 to 89 days, they improved their grades 50%. So I think that's a big deal, but we're moving toward those goals right now. The second goal is all students will exhibit positive behavior changes that support academic and social growth. And our target is that 75% of the students will improve their classroom behavior, their peer relations, and their accuracy and completion of their homework, handing it in. We measure that by doing teacher surveys and those teacher surveys are sent out from the state. They're an online survey and they open up in March and they have several weeks to answer those surveys and these are sent not to the teachers that are working in the program necessarily, but that daytime teacher who sees those students every day. And 75% of our teachers said that we have had improvements at least during the last year, so that's good, so we've met that goal. And the third goal is the percentage of students who are chronically absent from school will decrease. And those statistics we get from the school itself, are those kids absent or are they present? We compile this information and UT sends us back the data that they, after they see what we compile, they send us back the data and it shows about our absentee. So the target is that 75% will miss 14 or fewer days. We had over 95% that missed fewer than 14 days. So I think if they're attending the after-school program, they're coming all day and so that's a testament to that. And the fourth goal is that family engagement will be embedded in the entirety of the program. Family engagement is not just having a specific night or day for some parents to come in anymore, it's also other things that meet the needs of the parent, things that they need to know, resources that they need. And the target is that 90% of the parents will find useful resources, available style, a welcoming environment, and 80% of the parents will participate in the provided services. Well, we reached that goal also. We've had, according to the parent survey, and the parent survey is set out every year in February and they have several weeks to answer those surveys and they're also done online so that they can do them at their own pace or they can come to the school and do them. Extra opportunities are always available and offered each summer and one of the things that we do is the freshman bridge program for incoming 9th graders. We focus on leadership, career exploration. We tried this summer especially to align it with the CTE classes that they are going to be taking in high school and create a foundation for success. We want these students to succeed, we want them to have a great four years in the high school, graduate and go on to post-secondary education. And tonight, we have with us four students who were in the freshman bridge program this last year and they're going to come and let me know what they learned and show me some pictures, so if anybody has any questions, we'll go back to that.
So I'm feeling very wellness program this summer after my A3 year. It was very interesting, I learned a lot from that and I want to start with the beginning. So on the first day, we went to, we went on a tour of the Portohole Dam, you know, that is pretty big. And we got to learn how all this stuff works, like the inner workings, how the dam locks up, you know, how people, you know, regulate the water and stuff like that. And it does take a lot, it's very interesting and like detailed about how all this stuff works and it's very like complicated and they did take a while to build a dam, which is cool. But yeah, they do do a lot to keep the dam working and that was on, that was on the first day, so. Yes, this was the 30th of May, we went to the Edgar Urban State Park and it's pretty big, got a lot. We went to the, yeah, there's some pictures, we got to see a bunch of animals, snakes, opossums, stuff like that. There's snakes, opossums, stuff like that. Those are just some of the animals you can see around there maybe. Hopefully not, don't want to ruin this day. Next day, we went to Dana Corporations, which they build parts for, you know, Nissan and all those different things. It's in Gordleville. I got to work, it's me, a little machine. It was cool. Some other people got to work it too. Yeah, it takes a lot to build parts. You wouldn't think so, but yeah, it does. Around South Carfage. So South Carfage, it has some stuff in there, some stuff. The Wellness Center, Fitness Center, that's next to, yeah, the pavilion, next to the pavilion. People can go there, work out, it's pretty cool, a little gym. Yeah, the pavilion, we went to the pavilion. That was a really cool experience. I really loved going to the pavilion. We got to meet all these elderly people. They were so sweet, all very sweet. We got to play games with them and had a really good time. And afterwards, we went to the candy bar in town and that was fun, of course. Cans always great. So, and then after that, we went to Nissan plant tour and that was really cool. It was huge. It was like a little mini-city all in one place. Yeah, it's just so much that goes into building cars and you wouldn't think so until you actually go there. But yeah, we couldn't take pictures and that was a, because it's all secretive, very lucrative. Can't, you know, don't want the other companies finding out. But it was very cool to learn about it, so I really liked that. Yeah, this is just Carfage. But we did go to the hospital, got to learn about nurses and like what they do there. It does, you know, we also have to the bank. It was really interesting to learn about all the stuff they do at the bank. It's a little place in town called The Spot. You can go there after school, so I'm a little after-school fan. Just teaches you about, you know, working stuff out and how your life would be better if you do like, you know, a couple of steps. And yeah, it's, it's very cool. How they're working doing there? STEM Center, that was fun. Okay, so we went to Cookville and all day, went to the STEM Center and teaches you how to work as a team and like science, very science-based. And we got to build robot, not go build robot, we had to build racecourses and stuff for robots and we did a program and go around it. And it's really cool and like, because people, you know, it's just a little snippet of it, but programming does take a lot of work and I failed, but that's okay. And Allstate College, so we got to see the entire Allstate College. It's very big, very cool. It's very pretty. We got to go to a bunch of classes, not like attend the classes, no one was there, it's the middle of summer. But we got to see some of the rooms and like all the different things they had there. They did have a medical doll, I think, or like a, not doll, but like a robot that you could look at and like, that was cool. So, yeah. TCAD, the Tennessee College of Applied Technologies. That's one of those schools, like if you don't want to be like a, you know, something like a lawyer or a dentist or anything like that, like someone that's a welder or someone that does like electronics and stuff, that's a very interesting one to go to. It's, it's not, it's not as like focused on like a four-year thing. It's usually like around one or two years, two to three years. And yeah, it was, it had a bunch of technologies. Tessa Farm, that is in, uh, Rill's Inn, other places there, kind of. And it's very cool because like you would think that farms are all like small and like country and stuff like that, but it's very industrialized and they have these huge machines and like these fields are so big and I own a lot of land. And it's, it was really cool learning how like you have to like regulate what you do each year depending on the rainy seasons and the dry seasons. And yeah, it was really cool seeing all this huge stuff and we got to even sit in one and stuff. Nashville, we all, we all Nashville, Nashville's so cool. So we went to the, yeah, the state cap, the state Capitol Building. Yeah, and that's where the Senate goes and like stuff like that. I remember Terri Lee Weaver, she was there. That was really cool, loved that. But yeah, we got to see that, we see Senate, not the Senate there, but the rooms and then we went to a park and then we went to the Tennessee Museum. The Tennessee Museum was probably one of the most interesting parts of it because you got to learn all of the history of Tennessee, all the way back to like prehistoric days. It was so cool. And you get to learn about all the presidents and stuff like that. And I, it was just really interesting. So this is one of the, our presentations that we did. This isn't mine, so.
That's.
So yeah, so yeah, corner arts, that's one of those sec, post-secondary careers you can go through, which takes schooling, but not as much of that one. Just, we just had to talk about like stuff that was important to us and why we want to do a certain career, like stuff that is involved in the career. Color Arts, we took a ton of focus. So we talked about cooking and stuff like that. Yeah, schooling is a requirement to be a chef, but it is a good idea to go to school so, you know, people trust you not to put something in their food. Yeah, it's, it's, cooking is difficult. I mean, it's not like the easiest thing in the world, not the easiest job. But yeah, you know, it's cool. You can earn a little bit cash being a chef, but you might not think so. But yeah, you know, start out every other job a little low, but as the years go on, you get a little bit more money. Kitchen, why would you go work in an office, but maybe? So I just want to say that the freshman bridge program is very, it's a very good thing to have because like going into, I kind of knew where I wanted to be, but it kind of furthered even more that I wanted to go into the medical field when we went to the hospital and we got to learn all about that stuff. And they detail these jobs very well and you get to see all these types, different types of things you can do, like even if you don't really know yet. It's very, and like you go to the colleges and it's very like detailed about all these different things, how you, there's so many different programs you can take and you don't have to stick to one thing. And like, and it's fun because we got to go on all these trips and they like gave us lunch. But yeah, they do, it's really cool because you do get to learn about all these things that you might not know about like farms. I don't want to be a farmer, you know, but you might want to be a farmer after you see all the stuff that they do because it's like more deep, like more stuff involved than you might think. But yeah, so yeah, the freshman bridge program is definitely something I highly recommend if you're an 8th grader. It's, it's very, it's a very good thing to have.
Any questions? Mr. Lewis.
Excellent presentation and, and well spoken, very impressed and very proud of all of you. Thank you so much for that.
Just thank y'all. Did anybody have anything for Ms. Johnson? Anything else?
Say again?
May I have your time?
Any questions?
Well, I mean, obviously you did a remarkable job and, and that in itself shows what's going on. It's so important. And for me personally, I mean, just, and as a board member, but obviously personally, I, I think it's remarkable and wonderful at the same time. I almost want to cry when you have students come up and, and it's difficult to come in here and speak and put forth the effort with such a presentation like that and then you listen to actually how their minds opened up to new opportunities and new ideas. So excellent job. It's a fantastic program. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Okay, we will move on. We have a parent request. We have a motion from a parent request.
I'll make it.
And we probably, while we clear the room, can we go ahead and take out an order, move our executive session up? We have to clear the room anyway, we're just doing it all in one after the parent request.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll make a motion that we go into executive session after entertaining the parent request.
Second.
Second. Mr. Apple. Do we have to, we won't have to do anything with first motion. Do we have a motion from Ms. Moore, second by Mr. Apple? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll have to clear the room. We don't care. My word, we have a second. Uh, Mr. Taylor, any discussion? Not will vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Request granted. Let's move on to our consent items. We have a motion, our consent items.
Motion, make a motion, we accept consent item, indeed.
Mr. Apple, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Moore, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Let's go over superintendent actions, hope they had a chance to look at those. Move on to new business A. This is the 2020, 2021 school calendar. We have a motion on new business A.
Make a motion.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shelders, any discussion?
Is this the first of, we gonna have any more hearings on it or not, Brown, on the, on this calendar?
No, this, this should just be one.
This be only one?
This will be the one. If there's no discussion, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business B. This is policy amendment recommendations due to the TSBA policy manual, annual audit. And this is the first of two readings. We have a motion on new business B.
So move.
Mr. Shelders, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Moore, any discussion?
Is there any reason that we need to go ahead and approve these for purposes of statute?
Is this the one that's got the medicines in it?
Yes.
Huh? Is it?
Yes.
Well, what is that number nine there? I'm not, if you go to the medicines, what is that? What is that? I marked it just to, something to do with an injection, Brian. I can't pronounce that word.
Euphony.
Yeah.
That's probably, severe, 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 or, okay.
Okay. So basically, that's just saying, only this real nurse, she can do that, right?
For training.
Mm-hmm.
Which allows me to volunteer and make the pressure pressure. Been trained by registered nurses. Any other questions? If not, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business C. This is the addition of paraprof, paraprofessionals in the kindergarten classrooms. We have a motion on new business C.
I want to make a motion for a site to discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Manning, for discussion, we have a second?
What kind of, what did you decide in hearing?
I want to discuss this.
He's, he won't talk it for discussion.
Okay, okay.
You have a second?
Second.
Ms. Moore? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Well, what I want to bring out here about these extra paraprofessionals that we're going to hire for the kindergarten classes is, first of all, I'm not saying that I'm against this, but I was just saying that we got three options here to choose from. That's all, keep in mind that this is going to be a reoccurring expense when we do this. And it will be a reoccurring expense every year. I was thinking, you know, we talked about the six and a half hours, the seven hours and the seven and a half hours. And I had said something to Mr. Smith about this, most of our EAs and stuff usually work six and a half hours. There is a few, technically federal, that work seven hours. And what I was wanting to take discussion for this is, I think we ought to do the six and a half hours if we decide to do this instead of the seven and the seven and a half. Because it's, it's twofold here. It, it gives extra EAs into the kindergarten classrooms is what the teachers are wanting to have. But at the same time, it also saves us a little money by doing the six and a half hours versus the seven or the seven and a half hours. And of course, you know, the six and a half hours is eight to three, plus they'll get 30 minutes for lunch. So you're there during the school hours anyway. And that's what I was trying, I mean, last month, I think we said something about, well, let's just do the seven hours and do across the board. That was discussion that I was going to mention right here, if we decide that we are going to do this, let's look more at the six and a half hours instead of the seven or seven and a half if we decide.
Well, I mean, it'd be a whole lot easier on everybody, the system included, if we start out at six and a half rather than get into next year and say, boys, we want to cut this. You, you know what I mean? It'd be a lot easier to start out that way and see how it works. We can always add if we have to.
The other EAs in the building, except you said the federal positions are working six and a half hours, is that right?
Yeah, most of the positions are six and a half hours and, and I'd, I'd like to, these are non-certified positions, so at any point that, that we say it was a money issue, that would be a place that we might have to cut back. But one I'd like y'all to consider, you know, like this year, for example, we, we try to stay well within our budget. And so we've had, you know, like Dr. Norman at Depp, the central finance, you know, while in theory, we'd like to hire 15, number one, the pool probably won't be there. Number two, we get into a lot of things as far as being proportionate at each school reports, you know, if we do this, even though it's kindergarten and high school don't have them, we got to have an EA ratio. So it's not as simple as just saying, hey, we're going to hire 15. In my effect, it's having to hire 12 more to make it balance out on the report. So if we do decide to do this, you know, we might realistically look at hiring two or three this year and pile them, or it might be seven or eight, just depending on where the money's there. I'd, I'd, I'd ask maybe not to lock us in a certain number. You know, Gina would be mad at me and throw something at me because she wants one in every class and I do too. But, but we may, we may, I don't, I don't want to be locked into that because it locks us in a, a lot of dollars. And we, I'd like to look at this year and I think Gina and I've talked enough, if we, it might be two, it might be seven. It just depends on when we look at the numbers, we're, we're not going to dig into a fine balance with your permission. And again, that, what we do, even though at, at there, it will affect what we have to hire EA wise and stuff, maybe even the high school level. So it gets into a lot before we lock in and just say, let's hire 15.
And next year, we may only have 10 kindergarten classes.
Yeah, so it.
So it would vary then, year to year.
Yes.
You had 10.
And money.
Or 20. But let me ask you another question, Mr. Smith. This money was not budgeted for this year.
No, it's not this year.
These are.
It would just be.
Let's keep that in mind.
That's another point I wanted to make. If we get in, and we have, we, we put a quarterman to our roof on the elementary school. We've had an employer or two situation and the, you know, well, sickly, it cost us more money than we expected. So we're, we're fine, but I don't want to be locked in in case, because we're right over the budget for the mission.
Just, so what if we were to say six and a half hours and not to exceed 15?
Yeah. Then you're not locked into the number. Or worded at a point to be like, it's a discrimination of the budget.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
That way you have less than 15 if you want to just say not to exceed.
Up to 15. Yeah.
Yeah, that would, that, that wording sounds good, yeah.
It, it sounds good unless you hit 20 next year, then you'd have to come back with this.
Yeah. Or based upon the number of kindergarten class, you know.
Twenty. Always come back revisited. You know, we're revisited because, I mean.
And you could add that to it, to be revisited on your, on an annual basis, depending on, yeah. We revisit everything else and budget it year.
Yeah.
It's easy budget also, but.
So this start at Christmas, we approve it tonight? This approved, it starts at Christmas?
If we can find them, we'd like to start, you know, we'll try to have the numbers together and say, hey, we can afford two or six or one or whatever at this point, then we'll bring it back and show y'all what.
Well, it's definitely needed.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's no doubt.
It's definitely needed.
It'd be great if you could do it from K P 30, which is not affordable, but it would be, you'd see your test scores really, you know.
They just need, they need help, these teachers, they just need help.
It amazes me when you walk, I don't, I think I threw you a story, but I said, this orientation, I was ready, if I had any hour left, I'd remind you. So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve up to 15 at the six and a half hour a day.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Manning to approve the six and a half hours up to 15.
But to revisit.
And to be revisited.
And to revisit annually.
Yeah.
And we have a second by Mr. Lewis. Okay, this does involve money, so we will roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business D. This is FY twenty grant approval, a motion on new business D.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Taylor, any discussion?
This is just a one-year deal. Be, be applied once.
Business involves money, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business E. This is a bid approval for type D school buses. And we will make a motion on each one of these individuals. Number one, bid approval for the two thousand one type D seventy-eight school bus thirty-one. We have a motion on bus thirty-one.
So move.
Mr. Apple, we have a second.
Second.
Mr. Shelders, any discussion? Not will roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Number two, bid approval for two thousand one type D seventy-eight school bus thirty-two. We have a motion on school bus thirty-two.
So move.
Mr. Shelders, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple, any discussion? Will roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Third, we have a bid approval for a two thousand five type D seventy-two faster school bus thirty-six. We have a motion on school bus thirty-six. Ms. Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Manning, any discussion? Not will roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business F. This is a bid approval for the two thousand five Dodge Stratus. We have a motion on new business F.
So move.
Mr. Shelders, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple, any discussion? If not, will roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business G. This is the bid approval for gasoline. We have a motion on new business G.
So move.
Mr. Caleb, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lewis, any discussion? Not will roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Going to new business H. This is a bid approval for diesel fuel. We have a motion on new business H.
So move.
Ms. Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple, any discussion? Not will roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Motion passes. New business I. This is a request to remove portable classrooms from, from school campus, Carthage Elementary and Greenville Elementary.
So move.